Switch there to give everybody. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Gig Harbor City Council Study Session of Thursday, August eleventh. The time is two oh two P M. And I will turn it over to our city clerk for a roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Barber.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Lichten.
Here.
Councilmember Rothenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Storset will be joining us shortly. And Councilmember.
Here.
Okay. Great. Welcome, everyone, and welcome to those that are watching online with us. Um, we are switching item one and two. So our first discussion item this afternoon will be upcoming ordinances. And this is our report from city clerk Josh Sicker.
Thank you again, Mayor. Um, yes, so this memo that I've prepared is just kind of outlining some ordinances that we are planning to bring to council in the next month or two. Um, it's kind of a collection of ordinances that we staff have identified over the last six months or a year, or in some cases, a little bit longer, just things that we feel like we need to address in the municipal code. Um, most of these are just be just considered codifying current policies and procedures that we do that we've never really written down. So I'm just going to run through each of those really quickly. And then um, as I go over each one, if you have any questions, just let me know and I can address those. Um, the first one is the repeal of Gig Harbor Municipal Code two point oh four point oh one oh, which regards, which deals with study sessions. Um, this one has been on the books for five years. It sets the official time for city council study sessions as the third Monday of each month at five thirty. Um, to my knowledge, I don't think we've ever held a study session at that time, but it's been sitting in the code for that long. Um, and it really needs to just be removed because the new council guidelines makes provision for when we'll have study sessions. Um, the other the other provision of the sections that it requires that all study session materials be provided four days before the study session meeting. And council guidelines actually state that they need to be provided five days ahead of time. So it's not consistent with the guidelines and the guidelines actually spell that out a little more clearly. So we can just do away with that section completely.
Josh, sorry to interrupt. Seth has arrived.
Oh, I see him there. Get him over.
Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, the second change that we're looking to make, uh, this will be to the Gig Harbor Police Department Chapter of the Municipal Code. As you experienced before, every time we bring on a new police officer, we have them take the oath of office before council. Um, that oath of office has never been written down in a policy or a guide or code or anywhere. It's just something we do because it's an appropriate thing to do and um, it's a good way to introduce our officers to the council. Um, so I'm going to work with Chief Bucy and we will come up with uh, the official policy for how that oath is administered and and when we do it. Um, and who administers the oath and what the oath actually says. So we'll get that codified so that we will know in the future. This one came up during COVID when we started having to have people take the oath of office. Um, by virtual meeting and we'd never had a procedure for that. And then we found that we never really had a procedure for anything. So uh, we'll get that one corrected and into the code. Um, the third one on the list is the adoption of a policy for surplus authority. So this will be a new chapter in the municipal code. Um, it's a very common thing that we'll see in other cities. And while I draft the ordinance, I'll provide you with some examples from other cities, but you may have noticed that we brought forward resolutions, I think. Uh, with this current council, you've probably only seen maybe one or two from the I T department. But we just list a lot of surplus materials and say that they're ready to be surplus. It's really administrative action and if council's um, okay with it, we can just delegate that authority to the mayor so that we can um, just administratively surplus those items. The typical language that you'll see in those ordinances is that they may have to be surplus in a manner that meets the best interest of the city. That can mean uh, selling items, reselling items, recycling them, donating them to charities. Um, there's any number of ways and and really we have a staff, um, like R T Department, our Public Works Department, we we're really familiar with the types of ways that cities usually will will surplus their property um, in an appropriate manner. So it's just a delegation of that, any kind of real property. Any kind of real estate would have to come to council and anything with a value over uh, up to or over ten thousand dollars would come to before council for surplus approval. I see a question from Councilmember Henderson.
Thanks, Josh. Um, just a question on the surplusing and the obligation dispose of all property in a manner that meets the best interests of the city. Is there anything in there that explicitly prohibits the mayor from donating to a business that she he or she had would have interest in or donating to a friend that I mean, under under anything up to ten thousand dollars. Is there anything that that limits that? I mean, I can understand giving it away to a charity or something that makes sense, but what's the checks and the balances in that?
Well, I don't think we would ever donate to a business. Um, we might sell to another business. Um, and if we were dealing with another business that the mayor or someone has some kind of an interest in, um, that that would need to be something that we would run through with the uh, ethics procedures that we have. So
Okay, as long as that's codified somewhere, I'm.
Yeah, I'm thinking that's a that's at the state law level. I I can't specifically think of what in our code references it, but I know that the state law has some limitations on that kind of thing for elected officials and state and city employees.
As well, Josh and Councilmember Henderson, the five cities financial policies and our finance department are the check uh, imbalance on any administrative spending. So that would go through Dave and his team. And if there was anything that was out of line with state law or our city procedures, then they would like that for my attention.
Okay, sounds perfect. Thanks.
Um, Chief Bucy.
I just want to mention that sometimes the our department has donated items that we can no longer need to like mutually consortiums of law enforcement groups for training purposes. So that's also a possibility.
And and just to be clear, we don't have currently any kind of a policy for surplus. We bring a resolution to council for approval. Um, but we don't actually have a policy that says that's what we should be doing. It's just what the city has kind of always done. So we we do need to get something on the books that that shows that tells staff what they are allowed to do and what they're supposed to do. So um, the fourth ordinance that we'll be bringing forward, this one, um, you may have noticed. I think probably around the first of the year and then council came on, we started adding a new section to our ordinances that uh, for the correction of errors, which allows the clerk or the or the codifiers of an ordinance to make uh, corrections to scrivener's errors. Um, in the event that the city clerk should ever make an error, um, we would like to have in the code, a section that says that the clerk is authorized to make those changes. Um, it would apply to ordinances, resolutions, um, contracts, uh, agreements, minutes. Um, the the section of code will pretty clearly define what a scrivener's error is. So we don't want to leave it up to interpretation. Uh, we want to make it really clear that that what exactly is being delegated. So uh, we don't have rogue clerks going around and and changing things, but um, that'll be spelled out in the ordinance. And I've got a few examples that I'm going to pull from to to put that together. And then the last one is a section on uh, flag displays. Uh, prior to uh, Mayor Markley coming on, the the policy for flag displays was that the mayor would be consulted about whether or not they felt like the flag should be lowered uh, at different um, flag lowering requests. Those typically come from the governor's office. Uh, the governor directs all state agencies. And when that message comes out, it goes to anyone that wants to be on the governor's list so they know why it's happening. As of uh, January, when Mayor Markley started, the city has just essentially been following that um, the recommendations of the governor. So anytime the governor requests a flag lowering, we just comply with that. I think it reduces confusion in the community. Uh, we in the past, if people ask why our flags are lowered when other flags are not and when our flags are not lowered, when other places do have their flags lowered. Um, so we're going to try to stay in line with that. Uh, we will have a a provision in there that the mayor can request that flags be lowered even when the state does not. Um, I think we've had one instance where we've we've done that. And that was um, at the passing one, one of our Pierce County sheriffs, um, the state usually recognizes those when the memorial service is held. And we wanted to recognize that uh, right after we were made aware of their passing. So the mayor will still have a little bit of authority to to make that determination. So those are uh, some of the things that we've just identified that we'd like to have really formalized uh, in our code. So these these will be ordinances that come forward. Um, some of them may be so straightforward that we might recommend approval on first reading. Um, some of them might need a little more discussion from council to make sure that we've captured council's intent correctly. So um, we will address those as we bring them forward, but if there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. Not seeing any questions. Thank you, Josh, very much. Um, Josh has been working really hard to get our code organized, get things that have policies that need to be written for a long time. Getting those written. And so I just, I appreciate he and Tiffany's work so much on getting us streamlined and and in compliance and getting our code uh, more clear, spelled out, spelled out more clearly for everybody. So thank you for that, Josh, very much. Um, okay, so we will move on to um, item two, which is our appointment process for advisory boards. And again, this is, oh, first, I'd like to acknowledge Councilmember Storset has arrived. And also thank you to City Minister Administrator Kid Newson, if I can speak properly today for rushing home from Yakima or home to from Yakima to join us. You're a rock star. Um, so take it away, Josh, for item number two.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, so this next item is about the uh, advisory board appointment process. So as you know, uh, our last council meeting, we adopted uh, ordinance fourteen ninety-two, which uh, formally designated the mayor as the appointment authority for all of the city's advisory boards. Um, this procedure that we're presenting to you today is the mayor's procedure for how those appointments will be made. Um, the procedure procedure is kind of written to be an all encompassing, um, step by step, how we go through filling a vacancy on each board. So there are some in here, some provisions in here that are redundant to council's guidelines, which also um, kind of stipulates that that process. So uh, wherever council guidelines has has given direction, we defer to that. And then we kind of fill in with the the procedural um, decisions that the mayor has to make. Um, so just going through that procedure really quickly, all vacancies will be noted on the city's website. We use whatever outreach methods are appropriate. Um, social media, of course, we occasionally will use a newspaper display out if we think we can reach more people. Um, the city clerk's office is responsible for collecting applications and getting the application form out there. Um, all applicants have to complete the form. Um, and even people that are um seeking reappointment are required to complete the form. Uh, typically, our uh, our advertising time for a vacancy is going to be one month. The announcement will be made um, right about sixty days before the end of the term. So uh, in our next board members that we're recruiting for right now, which is the D R B and L TAC. Their terms expire at the end of September. So we started the advertising process August first. We'll collect applications all throughout the month of August, and then we'll use the month of September to to go through the review and decision process. Um, so once the application deadline closes, so in this case, on August thirtieth, we'll collect all the applications. We will send them all to the mayor and council at the same time so that you're all receiving them together. Um, council members at that time will then be asked to reach out to the mayor with any comments they have on the applicants. So you'll see each application. Um, and then the mayor will be ex- uh, accepting your comments on on the applicants. Uh, the mayor's process for reviewing these can can take a few different shapes. Um, we see we see different numbers of applications all the time for each different board. Um, sometimes when we have a vacancy, it's just simply because a current member's term is expiring and that member intends to stay on the board. And a lot of the times we will see that member be the only person who actually applies. So in those instances, we're not going to be bound to like holding a formal interview and it's uh, becomes obvious to the mayor and the staff that's working with them that that person is someone they want to keep. We may just forego all that process um, and just reach out to that person and let them know that we're happy to bring them back on. The each each situation is going to be a little bit different, which is why we have several different bullet points for for how we might approach that. So that, as it's written on here, the mayor may undertake some or all of the following. Uh, she may ask appropriate staff to have initial conversations with each of the applicants. Uh, reach out directly to some or all the applicants for a one-on-one conversation. Uh, ask appropriate staff for their comments or participation in an interview process. Uh, she could reach out to the chair of an advisory board for their comments, or maybe involve them in an interview process. Um, or ask council members for their comments on specific applicants. That last bullet point we've added in there because on occasion we'll have applicants that will reference city council members as a reference. Um, so that's just saying that the mayor may reach out to one of you if you were listed as a reference for that person, if you haven't already given your comments on them. Typically, in this part of the process, we're not going to involve council too much because the idea here is to keep to give every council member equal voice, um, and not pick and choose who gets to be involved in the selection process. Um, at the conclusion of the consideration process, the mayor makes a determination. Or if we don't have a candidate that uh, the mayor feels is appropriate, we may re-announce the vacancy for another three weeks and and restart that that advertising process. Once the mayor has made a selection for appointment, though, the mayor is not going to immediately notify that person that they're appointed. Um, we're going to reach out to council first and let them know the mayor's recommended this person for appointment. Um, and give council an additional opportunity to reach out with any concerns or any feedback that the mayor needs to consider before we announce that. Um, once councils had an opportunity to weigh in, then we will let the applicant know. Then we'll get it on schedule for appointment. Um, and then it will go to council for confirmation. Um, councilment, council guidelines says that the appointments will be made on the consent agenda of the regular council meeting. So we'll just schedule that for the next council meeting. Um, and then council can approve it on consent agenda, or they can uh, take it off consent agenda and discuss it if needed. Um, and I think that pretty much covers the process from start to finish, but I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody sees anything that wasn't covered or need some clarification there.
Uh, Josh, if I may, just very quickly, so Josh did a wonderful job of explaining this draft policy that's coming to you council for your comments. Um, and as it says in the council bill and within the policy, uh, the mayor values the feedback from the council. And that's why we're bringing it to you all for your feedback today, uh, to see if there's any uh, common suggestions that you have in order to make this uh, streamlined process as possible um, and a fair process. Additionally, one other item I wanted to mention is, and I've spoken with some of you about the separation of powers here between the um, executive administrative office and you as the legislative body. And so as this policy describes in conjunction with your uh, council procedures and guidelines, this process and the mayor's appointment is only one part. Uh, the mayor does not get to unilaterally put people into a board or a commission. It has to have confirmation from the council, which is the checks and balances that is uh, consistent with our democracy, which is wonderful. So I just wanted to um, put it out there that this this policy, if it is again, once we receive feedback from council today, um, that is just one portion of the process to have people get onto boards and commissions and it's not the final say.
Uh, Councilmember Rothenberg.
Yes, I, is this the time to ask a question about the policy?
Yeah.
I I do have a question. Um, I I think I heard you say, Josh, maybe I misunderstood that if in a a person's on one of these commissions and their term is up, uh, they may be the only one that wants to be reappointed. So they will say so. And did I understand it? That would almost be automatic? Or would council be notified that uh, John Black wants to remain on X Y Z Commission? Because council may have a a reason or a comment that maybe why he should not or she should not. Is that, did I misunderstand or?
No, yeah, yeah, I was probably a little unclear on that. I was just referencing that in the mayor's consideration portion. So all of the steps will be the same. So say we have a we have vacancies coming up on Altech. There's only one vacancy. There's one person on Altech who wants to reapply. They will still need to reapply, just like they would in a normal process. We'll still wait the whole thirty days to see if anyone else applies. Um, but if they are the only person that applies, then the mayor may not set up formal interviews or or if you go through any kind of a procedure, she may just be happy to say thank you, uh, we're going to appoint you back. But it will still have the same process where we'll let council know ahead of time that we're planning to do that before she announces that decision. So.
Thank you. That answered my question excellent.
Yeah.
And that's very similar to what we have just done with the planning commission where we received two candidates. And we received feedback that perhaps there were more candidates that didn't make it into uh, apply prior to the finalists, but can't speak today. I'm sorry, I'm still on the highway, maybe. Um, but that there were more people that wanted to apply and couldn't get in on time. And so we reopen the time for every, and we did receive more applicants. And so that was a direct correlation from council feedback.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you. Um, I guess I'd be remiss if I don't bring this up because I think we need to discuss it. I'm kind of torn either way, but we've been getting a lot of emails about this process from residents and a lot of the emails have been centering around that there will be no recorded or there'll be no recordings of the interviews of the candidates. And and again, Josh, correct me if I'm wrong, but um, the process as it's now written really are only, the council's only input will be based on a resume. And then our only input after the mayor makes the initial selection is, yeah, we didn't like it, but we I'm assuming that we, the council, at least as it's written now, won't have access to any of the interviews. And I I don't know whether it's legally not doable to do that, or whether we should. I just want to get it out there so we can discuss it. Because there have been a whole number of people writing about it. So I, you know, if there's reasons that we should do it or reasons we shouldn't, I'd sure like to hear.
Yeah, so the the way the process is written here is there, we don't necessarily conduct interviews for all appointments, um, as I went over before. Um, this, this procedure does not say that we are going to record the interviews or do anything formal like that. Um, and council would not be involved in the interview process because we are not um, picking and choosing council members. So in order for council to be involved in an interview process, it would have to be a meeting of the whole council, which would be subject to O P M A. Um, and all of that. I think part of the expectation of this comes from the old uh, Board and Commission Candidate Review Committee, which did have recorded meetings. Um, those meetings were recorded not because of transparency for the interviews. They were reported because they were a city council committee holding an open public meeting. Um, because appointments, all city appointments are administrative. Um, whether that's the city administrator or the city attorney appointment or advisory board appointments. Um, none of those occur in an open public meeting. And that's why uh, this recording procedure is not something that we're proposing in this uh, in this policy.
And Councilmember Henderson, um, bringing that up, there's been a couple of, and again, we're we're looking for council feedback on this. And I was camping during the discussion that you all had about this maybe back in June. And there was not council concurrence that that that, I think there was maybe one or two council members who who said they would want to be involved in the interviews. And the staff received direction that they instead wanted it to go through the staff mayor process. And so for us, considering this policy, we took that direction from the council as a whole and came up with uh, this, which is very typical for what many other jurisdictions do. Um, I think as Josh was just mentioning, we had brought the idea up of having interviews at work sessions. Uh, as Josh mentioned, when there's more than three of you, you need to have them recorded, not because of the interview, but because there's three council members who can make decisions. Um, and so that's kind of um, incongruent from the direction that we received from council in June, which was that council did not want to be involved um, in the interviews. And when I say council, I mean the majority of council.
Right.
And so we and to to further that, we've received some feedback from potential candidates that it's a little bit intimidating to meet with a full group of people and have them recorded, and that we may get more people wanting to serve on our boards and commissions uh, with a less uh, arduous process of going through a formal interview process. So those are just some of the considerations of why the policy is drafted the way that it is now.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. That's helpful. Um, I I think my intent was not that the council is involved in the interviews, as in us sitting around and listening to interviews or even asking questions. The ability to see the results of an interview that would be available to the council, because I I think that would help perhaps us uh, phrase questions about a candidate that might not be so evident from somebody's written um, resume, because people can write a lot of neat stuff on resumes. And then when they come in in an interview process, it's rather different. So that's kind of what I was getting. I I'm not, I'm not suggesting in a nerd that I want to imply that uh, the council should be involved in the interview process. That should be between the mayor and the council or the person on the commission that they're interviewing. But I'm just curious about the ability to see if there was a recorded interview would be very helpful for us to say, yeah, person's great. They match exactly what they wrote on their resume, or gosh, they just didn't. They just didn't do very well. And I just want to get that out there. That's all.
Yeah, thank you for that, Councilmember Henderson. I think some considerations for that would be uh, staff time. So I would look to Josh to see, you know, how much staff time that would be. I know one of our our priorities is to um, you know, trust staff and allow them to go through the process and also take tasks off of them to allow them to do other tasks. So I'm curious Josh, if that would, how much time that would add. And then secondarily, with Councilmember Henderson throwing out that idea of having videotaped interviews, I'm curious from the rest of the council members who would find that valuable or useful, or who would want us to to conduct those. And then lastly, Josh, would council and their procedures have the ability to interview candidates that the mayor has appointed prior to their confirmation process?
Well, there would definitely be a staff time impact. Um, conducting interviews is probably akin to hosting a a public meeting where you have to get the Zoom call set up and recorded and then uh, having to deliver that recording to council. Uh, it's not something I've really considered because it's not something we do with interview processes. Um, our our H R team, I don't think we ever record interviews with with anyone that we hire. So I'm not sure what that process would look like exactly.
Okay, and then Josh, could as part of council's rules and procedures, if they chose to, could they choose to interview the mayor's uh, appointments prior to their confirmation?
Uh, council could refuse to confirm someone if they hadn't interviewed. Uh, they could put that in their rules that they would not confirm a an appointment without an interview. Um, if that's the case, then that is requiring a special council meeting because that's the only way that we could interview candidates with with council present.
Thank you, Josh. And so with that, from Councilmember Henderson's comments, I would be curious from council, who would like to, who on council would find it useful of of staff time to have those interviews either uh, recorded when they're conducted?
Okay, seeing show, show of hands? If you, okay, two.
Okay, and then who on council would like to consider uh, the, since we now know that there is a possibility for council to interview prior to confirmation, noting that it would be a special council meeting either at a work session or otherwise, who would be interested in that? So again, this would be interviewing the mayor's appointed person.
So one, two, three, four, five, six. And Seth, I can't, because you're, I know you're in the car, um, Seth, traveling. If you can't raise your, there, I see you, yes, raise hand button. Okay. Um, if you need to unmute at any time and and interject, go ahead, because I won't, I know, I won't know if you're unmuted or not.
Yes, I, yeah, I am driving. So I'm just staying on mute. If I got my hand up, I'll use that for any directions. Thank you.
Thanks, Seth. Thanks. Okay, um, okay, so then Josh, if the majority of council would like the ability to interview candidates after I have appointed them, then what procedures do they need to follow or what needs to be um, done to codify that?
Uh, well, I think that's going to take a change to council rules, saying that they're not going to appoint anyone without interviewing ahead of time. Is is that what I'm understanding is happening here?
Well, I'm seeing yeses and nos. I I think the original question was if the council would like the ability to interview candidates that I've appointed, then they would be given If the council would like the ability to interview candidates that I've appointed, then they would be given that ability. And they would then schedule a special meeting requesting. Person A, B, and C to be interviewed by the council at a special meeting. But it wouldn't say that they wouldn't confirm that person if they didn't interview them. It's just how do they get the, how do they have the option of. Interviewing if they choose.
So if, if they're, if all council is requesting is the option to request an interview with someone to be appointed. Then that's a motion that council will have to make during an actual council meeting. So they can't tell us ahead of time outside of the meeting. We want to interview this person before we appoint them. They'll have to wait until the meeting and say. We don't want to appoint this person. We need to interview them first and then we can schedule that interview. Because council can't make that decision as a body outside of a public meeting.
Gotcha.
So, and there, we don't need to have anything codified to do that. Council can, once we put an appointment on their consent agenda, council can. Say at the meeting, we're not going to pass this. We want to have an interview first.
Okay. So they would need to pull that item off of consent. Bring it onto a new business item and then vote on interviewing that person.
That, that would be how I interpret it. Daniel may have some other thoughts here as he is on.
If it's okay, yeah, if it's okay, I'll just quickly chime in. I think, you know, I, you, you could invite the appointee to the meeting for confirmation. And open the floor to council to ask questions before a vote. There is a, i- if it, if it doesn't go in a positive direction in those questions, it certainly could be awkward to then schedule more. So it's, it's not like a foolproof, but if you do create a, a structure for that, it might be just expected. I, I would just caution that if you're doing special meetings for interviews for appointments to committees and commissions, you could have a lot of special meetings. So, um, just FYI.
Yeah. And I think, Daniel, the, the question would be, the mayor would be, let's say there's one appointment. I'm just going to pick arts commission. Um, so let's say there would be one chair or one position open for arts or commission. There were three applicants. The mayor has chosen one that she wishes to appoint. Then it could be that one person, not the full. Realm of candidates, but it would still be many different separate meetings because they all come up at different times.
Yeah, exactly. One, one, in theory, one for each open seat, not for every applicant, for sure.
Okay. So I'm curious. I know that council member, uh, mayor has had her hand up for a long time. I am curious if. We can wrap this part up. I'm not sure if council member Luke has a comment on this, but I am curious from the other council members that have their hands up. What their understanding of what they were saying yes to was.
Yes, I, I would, yes, if we can clarify this, the council interviewing portion of the comments right. Right now, that would be great. Um, council member look.
So are you going to clarify that? I'm, I'm, I'm happy with waiting until that clarification happens.
Well, we're trying to seek clarification from council members on what they, if they, they said, yes, they would like the ability to interview, but. Taking into consideration what Daniel and Katrina and Josh have said. Is, you know, is this still what you would like to move forward with in terms of. There would just be an understanding that if, if this person is on consent for appointment. And someone wants to pull that off the consent agenda and vote to interview that person. And not appoint at that time, then the council would vote as a whole at that time to not appoint that person. Or they would vote to appoint the person, any, you know, without an interview, whatever the majority of council vote is at that time. If it, if the majority vote is to interview that person, then that person would not be appointed at that meeting. Then the sketch, a special meeting would be scheduled for that person to then be interviewed by the council.
So, so if someone is on the consent agenda, it doesn't take a full council vote to have the interview. Some council person can say. I'd like to have an interview for this person. Are we going to require a full council vote in order to have an interview?
Yes, it has to be a majority vote by the whole body to change the, to change that appointment process.
So, so I'm, I'm in favor of whatever is going to give us transparency for our citizens. And so I. I, I'm in favor of being able to pull someone off, uh. For an interview, but I don't think it should be by vote of the full council, because, uh, because in that way. You're going to have to have four people that want to have an interview and, and that way, and that'd be great, because then you would have transparency right there. You'd have somebody there. To answer our questions, but if you don't have four council members that want to have the interview, then you don't have transparency. So that's my concern. Uh, I'm happy to, I think it's a great idea to have it. And to be able to say, yes, we want to interview somebody, but, but I'm not in favor of having the full council vote for that.
Well, Josh, what are the, what is the?
Mayor, if I may, I think council member look, I definitely understand where you're coming from. There's the. The interesting thing again about the duality of this process is the mayor points and the council confirms, and that really is the separation of. Our government. Um, and when it comes to council, council only makes decisions as a whole. You guys. Individual council members don't have power to make decisions. And so, you know, pursuant to state law, and I asked Daniel or Josh to jump in, it takes a, a full vote of council to do something. Like that, which would be to pull someone off for an interview, take something off of consent. It's kind of how our business is, is conducted.
But, but one council person right now can pull something off of the consent agenda and have it explained to them. And would not, would that not be the same thing as pulling that, pulling a confirmation off and, and having an interview happen? I mean, if. Why can pull something off consent agenda right now? And if Jeff's around, he'll explain to me what it means. And so why would not be the same thing? For interviewing a, an applicant.
That's a great question, a great clarification to make sure that we're talking about the same thing. So I really appreciate that comment. The, it does take one house person to pull off the consent agenda. And so Josh, feel free to jump in here, but one coun- council member could pull the confirmation off of the consent agenda if we were to go this way. Staff likely Josh would then say, this is the process that the mayor, the mayor's process that we undertook in this instance, and we explain that to council. And then it would be up to the council vote, Josh, if I'm correct, at that point, if council were to say, we want to interview this person or to confirm. Is that correct, Josh?
Yeah, the action, the, the council action, council member action to pull something off consent agenda can be made by one council member without a second, but after that, any subject. Action would need to be a motion with a second and support a full council. So your, your action would be to, to pull the appointment off the consent agenda. And then at that point, you would have to make a motion. To conduct an interview with council, or you would have to make a motion to, uh, appoint. Uh, as the agenda bell says for that action item, or, you know, whatever, whatever other action council would want to take.
And the interview would take place at a subsequent time, not in the general meeting at the podium, because. That person may or may not be there if it's on consent, right? So we just want to set that up, that it wouldn't be at, at that business meeting. So that would be something if. The majority of council said, we want to pull this off. And after our explanation. Council's not satisfied, then the interview would be conducted at a special meeting of the council.
But I still have concerns about transparency. I don't think that that provides it.
If I could, just council member Luke, if I could just try to dig in that a little bit further. Putting the established process with the, with the application packets going to individual council members with feedback loop to the city clerk. Myself and the mayor with the department head being involved with the feedback loop. From the council member to the mayor with this going on the public agenda, so that anyone can see who's being appointed. I'm curious. I really want to get to the, to the, to the crux of what. Is not transparent about the process so that we can all understand what that is.
So your comments are the mayor's comments, or, uh, will it be available to the public? Uh, for them to read, uh, your comments or count, uh, if, if chair is involved of these committees, those comments. Will, will the public be able to read these comments that you provide?
I believe they'd be a public document. Daniel, I'd ask you to jump in here.
Yes, they would.
So, and are we guaranteed that people will provide? I mean, I, I read in here that this may happen or that may happen. But I don't see anywhere in here that this will happen or this shall happen. So I, I would be. I, I am concerned that you would, that staff liaisons would not make comment. If I felt comfortable. That staff liaisons would make comment and there was indeed a process for the mayor appointing and that that process was. Available for the public to see or to read. I think that would go a long way towards establishing some transparency for our community.
I have a, a clarification point. Josh, when we had the council review committee, did we publish the applications?
No, applications were not made public. Um, but the applications are provided to the council members, um, but the applications do contain material that we might not. Uh, normally be able to disclose. So. In general, those would be provided as a public records request, but they were not posted on the city's website.
Thank you.
Um, council member Barber. We, okay, I see you're unmuted, but we can't hear you. So I don't know if it's a microphone issue. You could try muting and unmuting again. Sometimes that helps. No.
There's a little arrow next to the mute button that if you click that, you can select your microphone.
Daniel, city attorney and tax report.
Been a long two and a half years.
Give it to me now.
Yes, we can. Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you, Daniel. Let's give you a raise.
ITM, city attorney.
Okay. So for me, this comes down to trust. And it's something that we've been talking about so much this year, beginning with our retreat and how. Proud we are of our staff and the work that our staff is doing and the work that our mayor is doing and our city manager and how much. We all believe that we are speaking for them and we trust them and we support them. And right now, the way that this new pr- process is written. When someone applies, we will receive the applications. We can give feedback to the mayor. We can give feedback to the, even to the. Staff person who works with that commission. We can ask that specific questions be read, be asked of them in the interview process. We can express our concerns. My feeling is that it is. That we need to trust that the people that we have hired in those positions to do those jobs are doing those jobs. And that the mayor who we elected to do that job is doing that job. And then when those app, when that recommendation comes back to us, if we still have a question, we can again. Call the mayor and ask the mayor a question about that applicant. At that point, if there's still a question, then I think we go through the process that we've been talking about, where we could pull it out of the consent agenda. But I guess my feeling is that is really going to be a rare circumstance. Because we've had two opportunities to review and ask questions. And we know that our amazing staff and mayor are going to do their job. So I guess. I'm seeing this as being a pretty public and. I'll say it transparent process right now, the way that it's written. And I really appreciate everyone's feedback on that. And I appreciate where you're coming from, Jenny, but. I just, I feel like we are doing the most, the process right now, the new process will involve everyone. Whereas the old process involved three people. On the council. So I really think this is a good move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Barber. Council member Storset.
Yes, thank you. Um, well, mayor, I think council member Barber just, uh, nailed that. Um, I completely agree with their comments. Uh, I was thinking, you know, and we've been thinking a lot about obviously the trust and discussing that. And I completely agree. So I'll leave it at that. It won't take up too much time. Just repeating what she said, but I agree. Thanks.
Thank you, council member, um, Rodenberg.
Yes, uh, we, we all like hearing from the public. But frankly, I'm getting tired of getting emails generated via a. Chimp mail, uh, to prove someone's personal agenda. I don't want to be solicited to move someone's. Desire to be a mini power broker and pick and choose who's on a commission and tell. A bunch of minions to please, uh, send an email and say you want Joe Blow to be on this commission. I just don't think that that's in the best interest of the public. And frankly, when you get 70 emails, all identical. It really takes away from the ones that you get that are not identical, the people that genuinely have something original to say. And the words were not put in their mouths. So I think, uh, the, the public does not. Choose the people on a commission. That's why we have the process. So I, I, I think it's good just the way it's written. And I don't think we need to have any further interviews. My. Comments. In all.
Thank you, council member Rodenberg. Council member Liggins.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Um, so, you know, I'm open to discussion about having the open interviews. I'm open to the different perspectives we bring. I think having these open discussions between us as council is important. But I have some concerns and I don't know if I should talk about this now or after this wraps up. But I'm concerned that some of the actions between us as a council, speaking candidly. Don't feel trustful, don't feel respectful. And I feel like. We are stronger because we all bring something different to the table. We all sit down and have different experiences. Our collective wisdom is that. It's collective wisdom. We all work together. We all bring something to the table. And you know, some of the recent. Council, you know, communication that I've seen, it doesn't feel like we're cohesive. It doesn't feel like we're respectful and trusting. And I feel like if we lose that, we're going to lose important voices. And who's really going to lose is going to be the citizens of this city. I feel like. We need to get together. We've got important work ahead of us in the next couple of months. There's some big decisions, some. You know, hot topics, so to speak. And I feel like we need to work together collaboratively. And I, I look back to. When we went through Ann McFarland's parliamentary training and it talked about have, you know. Lots of discourse, have lots of discussions at meetings, bring up your points, you know, be passionate. But once council comes to a decision, we need to stand beside each other and we need to be supportive. And I feel like when I see things that question whether I'm being transparent and I, I like getting the emails from the public. I mean, even if they say the same thing or whatever, you know, to engage, but I just feel like. Those voices are going to start to be not listened to by the rest of the council potentially, and that's a loss. I really believe that's a loss. And I would, I'm just being very candid and just bringing this out into the open, or as Tracy likes to say, I know. Tracy likes to say, bring it into the light. I don't know if it feels so light. Sometimes these are tough decisions and tough discussions. But I almost feel like we as a council, and not that I want another meeting, you know, especially in these beautiful August days. But maybe we need to act on this and do something with the input. Of the clerk, with Katrina, with Daniel's input, whoever about what our council conduct is. You know, we looked at our council guidelines, we pulled out the social media, we had lots of discussion about that, but maybe we need to revisit that. And I don't know if I'm alone here. Maybe I'm going out on a limb, but I just feel like. You know, we're stronger together. So I, yeah, I'd love to hear what other people think of that.
Thank you, council member Liggins. Council member Henderson.
Oh, I didn't have any, I had a comment on something different, but I, I agree with. I agree with that. Uh, let me ask Josh to clarify some before, or prior to what we're changing now. When we had the civil service commissioner, whatever, we were called to the time and interviewed candidates. Were there, am I, am I correct in saying that their, in their resumes were not made open to the public? And the recordings that we made, because I know all. And the recordings that we made, because I know all of ours were recorded when Lee and Jenny and I were interviewing folks. Were those recordings made available or could they have been made available to the public?
Uh, they were made available, they are on our YouTube channel, so those are out there. And then prior to COVID, prior to Zoom, we had audio recordings of all those. Those recordings are. Making those recordings is an administrative decision that we made because, because the body was an OPMA body and that was just our general administrative policy. There's not an OPMA requirement to make those recordings, it was just something we as staff decided to do.
But again, it could be something that we decide to do, record them, leave them out there, and if somebody wants to see it. Then they can, and that could, but again, I, I don't want to imply and I don't want to sit through interviews, I just don't. And so if I, you know, if I want to take the time to look at a recorded interview. That's up to me and that may educate me farther or a little further on somebody's qualifications. But yeah, I don't want to do any interviews, I don't want the, all, everybody on the city council during interviews for these commissions. I mean, I, I think that's as open as we could be.
Yeah, and the only way that council can make that decision is, if it is the council conducting those interviews.
But the interviews would be for us like. An additional part of their resume is what I'm trying to get at, so. You know, I don't need that. What I'm trying to not to imply is that the whole council has to watch all the interviews. And then we sit down and discuss the interviews, we joint, we singly could look at the interviews, they'd be on a. A server just like all the other ones were. And if we have questions about somebody's backgrounds based on the resumes that you're gonna send us. We could look at the interview, if there was an interview scheduled or actually conducted. That would just give us a little bit more in, information when we do say, okay, it's fine, it's on the consent agenda, I don't want to pull it off, it's good. I, I'm just bringing that out there, not that I want any, I, I don't want any more meetings than we have right now, I don't think that we need it. And I'd like, like Brenda said and, and others have said, we have to trust the mayor, we gotta trust our city staff. I just think it's just another data point that could be put out there at our own time and place just to go look at it. And I think that may get to some of the transparency that other people could look at those. Just like our meetings here, you know, people can look at it for an hour, hour and a half.
So what I understand is if there were to be interviews recorded between myself and a candidate. Or myself and a staff liaison and a candidate. Then those could be, those recordings could be provided to council. Not at the time of the interview, but after the interview for pe, for council to review those. And see that interview if they choose to and then provide individual feedback. But that would be the only way that it would be. Not violating OPMA. To, I'm, and Josh, correct me if I'm wrong.
Mayor, if I, if I may, it would not be a violation of OPMA because you as the mayor are not. The final decision maker in this, and so as Josh described, and I think this is a very important point. That maybe being missed is that the previous board candidate review committee meetings. Those interviews were recorded not because they were interviews, but because there were three council members together.
Right.
And so because the mayor would be interviewing people, there is no OPMA requirement to have that interview. Done, however, that doesn't mean that it couldn't be done. And so I just, I wanted to be able to make that distinction to, because it's a. The council as a body is very different than the mayor as a, the mayor. And the, the, because you know, as staff. To conduct the city's business, we have meetings all day long with various people. And they're not all recorded, although we do tell you about, you know, important ones in the decisions. But that is an important differentiation as to why they were previously reported and then why right now there's not an OPMA requirement to do so.
Right, and then just, you know, again, for clarification on the ordinance that was passed, that. That was passed to come into compliance with Washington state law. So that had nothing to do, that, that specific ordinance has nothing to do with this. Process, this actual, the details and the nitty gritty of the process. It was just, it was to get our code and our city in compliance with state law. And so. There's like five different layers to this entire thing and they've all been very confusing. And so I'm hoping by the end of this discussion, everyone will understand what each layer is and why it was there. And why some were removed and why some are being added. And, and everyone then will know what each other's role is and what we're supposed to be doing and when and who does what. So that's what I'm hoping by the end of this, we'll have that all figured out. So, um, let's see, council member Barber.
Hey, I'm gonna test my speakers, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you, Daniel. So I guess we kind of have two conversations, two lines of conversation going here now. And what I was gonna say was, I don't need to hear an interview. After it happens, again, I trust the mayor and I trust the staff. To do, to conduct the process the way that it's outlined. And, and I don't, I don't need to hear it. And in talking to my neighbors who I've been talking to about this process, they also don't need to hear it. Because they elected me. To know what's going on and to make those decisions. So that's dealing with the interview question, I want to make sure that the issue that Brenda brought up about. Potentially having another meeting, which I don't want to have either outside, we could have it in a park or something. I don't know how we'd record that though, Josh, you can work on that.
You can have it at the brick house.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I'd rather not have another meeting, but I also think that these, these discussions about. A code of conduct and our conduct outside of meetings and that kind of thing are really, really important to have. And I don't want us to lose that part of this conversation today, so that's all I have to say right now.
Thank you, council member Barber. Council member Rodenberg.
Yes, I would like to agree with both council members, Mikkens and Barber. We have council guidelines and procedures, but I think that only. Guides us in our meetings. I would like to see maybe a retreat or another meeting, Brick House would be fine. Where we really talk about outside of our meetings, how to counsel people conduct themselves. Uh, what is proper and I, I would also, I'd like to see it. Cause there seems to be controversy here, I'd like to see it maybe put on by a third party, somebody that could work as a facilitator. To get to the root causes of why there is this controversy and hard feelings and insults. Uh, etcetera going on, when we ought to all be conducting ourselves ethically and morally. And for the good of the city, outside of our many meetings as well. So I, I would like to push for that meeting to be set up.
Thank you, council member Rodenberg. Council member what?
Yes, thank you. I think the idea of, of the recording with you and, and the applicant is a great idea. And I also want to say. Promoting transparency for our citizens does not mean in any way whatsoever a lack of trust. For our mayor or any of our council members, has nothing to do with trusting this body. It has to do with providing information for our citizens, that's what we should be doing here. Um, so anyway, that's what all I had to say about the trust issue and I'm fully supportive if the mayor. Would like to do those interviews, I think it'd be great and I assume then that those interviews would be online. For citizens to see, that correct?
Not typically, we, there, there are municipalities do not post interviews on their city websites. We, it's just not something that I'm comfortable doing. I think that if the council has been elected to make these decisions and be the confirming body for these appointments. The people should trust the people that they elected to make these appointments. This is a, this is a, an administrative process by an administrative body with two parts. That are in check and balance with each other. And if the public does not trust their council members and their mayor to do these administrative procedures. Then they should consider that when they're voting for the next round of people. But I, I just think that we are gonna lose candidates for these boards if we're publishing all of these things. On our website, especially when there is no OPMA requirement to do this. And if council does get the opportunity to see these interviews. And provide comments, it would be a third opportunity then for council to provide input. To me and to the staff on these people that have been chosen. That I don't think it needs to be published on our website, I think that if it's, that council can view those interviews and give their feedback. As another measure of feeling really comfortable with that appointment. But I don't, I would not anticipate that these would go on our website and I would ask for. Josh's and, or secret Stecker and Katrina Kneusen's comments on that. I just don't, I don't feel that that is necessary in this process. I feel that this process as it is, is transparent, the public knows exactly how we're conducting this business. And they know exactly how the appointment process is going to work from start to finish. And that in and of itself, I feel is transparent, that the public knows how these appointments are made. So I, I know that you and I will probably not agree on this ever. And so I'm, you know, I'm trying to get to a place where. At least we're understanding where each other's coming from. Without anyone feeling that they are not trusted or that they are being accused of having secret meetings. Or they're being accused of not being transparent, when that could not be further from the truth. And so I'm just, you know, I, I'm with the rest of the council's comments in terms of, I would love a retreat. Where we all sit and, and talk about this with a third party facilitator and kind of get to the root of some of these issues that are going on. Because things are, things have been going very well with this council up until recently. And so I'd like to see what derailed it and, and how we can get us back on that track of. A really peaceful cohesive council that disagrees, but respectfully. And, and then once that council meeting is over. You should be able to go barbecue with that group of people and have a great time and, and just leave the vote at the vote, you know, and not drag. These things out, and so that's where I, that's where I as a mayor would like to see us as a team working together. When I feel right now like we're in a taffy boy machine all going different directions and so.
So I need to make a comment here, I work for the citizens here in Gig Harbor. Those people are my boss and I know from when two thousand and eighteen, when I was elected. One of the things I ran on was to get rid of secrecy at city hall. Because in two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and fourteen. We had citizens coming and standing up because we had city secrecy happening here at the city hall. And it, and they were unhappy, our citizens were unhappy, they knew what was going on and I. It, it's not a good situation for our citizens to ever doubt anything. And so why would we not want to have processes that are just open? Well, I, I just don't, I guess I don't get it and I guess probably you and I will probably not understand. Because the citizens just have a right to not ever guess what we're doing here. That's it.
Council member Liggins.
Yes, so, um. I, I appreciate everybody's candor and I appreciate everybody's comments. Um, I just had a co, a quick question and then just a comment to make. My question was, is that when the council meeting packet is published ahead of time. On the consent agenda, it has the names of who's going to be appointed to those commissions, correct? And the public can access that, will it have their application or any information about them? Or just recommended without reservation or something like that written?
Personal informa, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Items don't provide the, the background information of each person, um, we treat that confidentially, just like we treat any application for employment.
Okay.
The, when the mayor's making an appointment, we treat it all as the same. Um, the same authorization that she gets from state laws, that, that the mayor is the appointing authority for the city. And we, we just treat those all identically, whether it's appointing an employee or appointing a volunteer to a commission. Um, the process is the same for that, so we, we do treat them with discretion and confidentiality.
Sure, sure.
That will be an open public record if someone asks, but we don't, we don't put it out there.
Sure, sure, so someone could ask though and get information. And if someone, let's say, and, and not that I believe that this type of nefarious situation would come up. But let's say you have a neighbor who you know, you know, wants us to build cat houses or cat condos in the backyard of every neighborhood in the city. And they want to be on the design review board and you don't necessarily want them, you could see their name up there. And potentially call in and give public comment, correct? So there is that kind of transparency, but you know, I know we're all passionate and I know. I know we all want to serve all citizens of Gig Harbor, I truly believe that. And I think that we all want to be transparent, we all want to bring our best. But when, when I hear things like. You know, we don't want secret meetings, we don't want this, none of us want that. And that's where I feel like we need to just maybe have this in the open, it sounds like maybe there's some support for what I brought up. And I, I'd love to hear just if Katrina or Josh have any ideas on this or. You know, maybe just because I feel like we do need to just have these hard conversations sometimes and just talk directly. Anybody who knows me really well, I'm a, I'm gonna talk directly and if I'm frustrated. I'm gonna come and tell you and if you're frustrated with me, I want you to come and tell me. So, um, maybe we can just, um, and if there's any Katrina or Josh, not to put you on the spot or Daniel. But if you have ideas about something or what other cities do, you know, I'd love your thoughts.
I think definitely if the majority of council would like to do so, we could work to schedule a, a retreat for the council. I mean, I know you already have a, a annual retreat, but it does sound. Like at least there's three of you that want to do this, we could bring in a third party consultant who typically works with. Uh, councils through issues and get it out on the table. The things that I've heard would be council conduct. Um, outside of meetings, that discussion as well as, um, social media policy and. As a fun aside, I had lunch with two city attorneys from the Puget Sound region yesterday. And we had a very lively discussion about social media policy and I learned some things that I had. No idea that people could be significantly liable for things that were not done properly. Uh, and so after hearing that, I definitely want to bring that information to council anyway. And so if we can have that. You know, tied up into this council retreat, I think we could, you know, move forward with those procedures as well as have the discussion. And it sounds like several council members would like to have. Um, I would just want to know what the timeframe is that you're looking. At for this, so that we know when to. How fast to get going.
I mean, I think it would be good to address it soon, but.
Very soon.
I, that's just my, my personal thought, just because I feel like we just need to air and be consistent. And just do maybe some team building, I think Zoom, sometimes it's hard to make those connections, so.
And then Lee makes everybody dinner afterwards.
Council member Rodenberg.
Well, along those lines, I don't see other hands up, so my question is, will there be pizza at the retreat?
There will be whatever food you all want.
Thank you.
Only salad, only salad.
We'll, we'll have personal requests maybe from council members.
So there, I've seen three nods for a retreat, I believe, council member Rodenberg, Liggins and Barber.
And you can add store set to that as well.
Council member Book as well, so, okay, yes, so we'll get, we'll get that going ASAP.
Okay, so there, just to wrap up the proposed policy. It sounds like there's not concurrence of any changes. To the policy, I did just check with Daniel while the discussion was going on. To see if there's an issue with us recording interviews, Mayor, with you, um, I know that you just, you just talked about this, but I just wanted to provide. Uh, this information that if we did provide these interviews to council, then that, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, is that a quasi? You know, correct me if I'm wrong, is that a quasi legislative or action? And therefore council would not be able to talk to each other about those interviews. Is that correct?
You're, you're muted.
Sorry, I clicked, but it didn't take. Um, the. Ju- ju- just like anything, you know, uh, information flows from administration to council members. Um, all the time. So that's perfectly fine. Council members can't then. Talk amongst themselves and and groups uh, that would be a quorum of council or. In a succession of conversations where that information is shared to create a serial meeting or a rolling meeting. Um, so viewing something is certainly fine. It's, in my view, just like reading the council packet or a memo from Katrina. So I think that's fine. I just make sure that you don't then start chatting amongst yourselves.
Okay, thank you, Daniel. Um, so. It sounds like we heard some really good feedback today from council. Mayor, I think it would be um, incumbent of you, Josh and I, to get together and discuss the feedback from council, if that's acceptable to you. Um, kind of talk through these things and then we can report back to council if there's a change to that or not. For, for the process, kind of go through the mechanics of that and see what your decision is on that. Um, and then we would work toward that council retreat. And just want to know when August probably is not going to work, just with everybody's vacations. But are we thinking September?
Um, yes, I think majority would like September.
I know that um, we have a council member that's out most of October and so. September or November was gonna be. So we'll do September. Josh and I will work that out. And.
Well, and because there are outstanding um. Advisory board, board appointments that need to be made, I, I would like a show of hands from council. That are supportive of the policy as written. Because we do need to make some appointments. One, two, three, four, five. Hold on, my screen just changed. Okay, I think I saw five. So, okay. So we will, we will still get together and talk about everything that we've heard today. But there are some appointments that do need to be made. And so I want to make sure, I wanted to just make sure that the majority of council is. Is okay with this process and then any, any of these um, bullet points that we discussed. Maybe then brought to council and it could include a recording of an interview. So um, just. We'll let you know what the, what that decision will be for each commission as it comes up.
Thank you, Mayor. I I did not mean to imply that you're, that we did want to adopt the policy.
Oh, no, no. Yeah.
But I think that there was some feedback today that we may want to to further consider, um, especially depending on. Um, you know, how many applicants we get, et cetera. So just things for us to talk about.
Yeah, no, that's, that's great. That's great. I appreciate that very much. I appreciate your count, your comments, council and your. That you're the discussion. And I think hopefully this will. Result in a great retreat where we can hash a lot of these things out and um, then be able to move forward in a positive way.
One more thing before. Beat a dead horse, but the, I hope that bringing this policy to council shows this administration's dedication and. A relationship and how much we appreciate council's feedback. Um, there's not a requirement in law that administrative policies come to the council for. Um, recommendation uh, and comments. And so I just really hope that this shows that it's our, um, and the mayor's. How we're conducting business, that we're bringing these things to you and receiving feedback because you really are. Um, you were elected by the people and we appreciate your feedback. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Administrator. Appreciate that. Okay, so we will, i- is, is anyone in need of a break for five minutes? I'm seeing yeses. Okay, so we will adjourn now at three seventeen and we will return at approximately three twenty-four. Welcome back to the Gig Harbor City Council Study Session of Thursday, August eleventh. The time is three twenty-six PM. Um, Councilmember Jensen is excused for the rest of the meeting. And we will move right along to our third item of business, which is our two thousand and twenty-two active capital improvement project schedule update. And this report comes from our Public Works Director, Jeff Langham. Thanks for being here, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. Uh, hopefully you've had a chance to review the schedule for the. Active CIP projects in the, in the matrix. I'm gonna do my usual unless I hear direction. Otherwise, I'm just gonna go through the schedule. And fill in some um, comments as we go through the schedule and answer any questions you might have. So, go ahead and share my screen. Okay, hopefully you can all see that now. Um, starting off the Skansy Net Shed, um, as you know, on uh, last Monday, we had a. Council agenda item, the consent agenda that uh, had a consultant come back and do some structural. Um, design for the interior of the Skansy Net Shed. So that's occurring. This project got pushed out. For construction to start in November and then um. Be completed ideally when conditions are right for painting later in spring of two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, Sports Complex, that project is moving along very well. Uh, we did receive thirty percent conceptual design this week. Uh, the survey is come, uh, topographic survey and tree survey is now complete. Uh, staff is reviewing the conceptual design and then uh, we'll have. Uh, the ability to provide comments back to the consultant and then. Prepare to submit land use applications, uh, hopefully in September. Still haven't set the date for the uh, next public open house, but we're leaning based on all the. Permitting uh, documents that will be ready to have that open house probably mid to late September. And then Austin honoring art installation, uh, as you, as I said in my email yesterday, there was a. Uh, quite a hectic day yesterday, but they were able to get the artwork raised and in place. The artist was there with his son. Uh, put it on the finally, final touches. Um, and then covered it for the unveiling. So if you drive past now, it'll be, it's covered until we get to the unveiling, which I know Laura is uh, working. To set a date. But uh, yeah, because we've got some good progress going on that. And then commercial fishing home port, uh, that is proceeding. The city staff is providing sixty percent design comments now. Um, we're slowly proceeding through the design. There's not a big rush to finalize the design. We're really waiting to hear back from the consultant. Uh, or sorry, the uh, Army Corps of Engineers, National Marine Fisheries on the proposed mitigation. So um, just. Proceeding this through design uh, until we hear back from them. We don't want to get too far ahead in the design. If they have to change something, we don't want to back up and and restart ourselves. So. But uh, slowly proceeding, you will be seeing uh, hopefully. Uh, at the September twelfth meeting, a consultant services contract amendment for DCG to. Uh, do the additional, perform the work for the additional mitigation, uh. Environmental review and for the additional electrical design. So that's, that's on its way getting queued up. Electric vehicle charging stations, we are progressing with that. Uh, it's just talking to Jeff Olson this morning. And uh, we are definitely on track to have that constructed in place by the end of this year. So, uh, and then you'll see when you get the draft budget that we've got more in there for. Uh, city hall and for operations center. So, making progress. Moving down to the boat visitor center rehabilitation, um, consultants underway, we are. Uh, it coinciding with the Skansy Net Shed repairs. We are also having a consultant. Do some necessary testing for roofing. We have to test for asbestos anytime we re-roof. Uh, just to check a box on the building permit. Uh, so that is happening right now. And then we're uh, getting ready to finalize the design. And get out to bid on that project. Uh, let's see, city street projects, uh, public works op center. Well, you know about that one. Um, rechecked those bids and then gonna be awarding hopefully uh, by the end of this year, a new project. Or or the, the construction project. Harborview Stinson, oh, oh, sorry, Councilmember Woo, you got a question? So you're muted, Councilmember Woo.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, I've noticed on Point Fosic. The construction, the street constructions going on there. And we're putting in, I think, ADA access to the sidewalks. Is that part of our ADA project that we're working on in the city?
Yes, that's part of the annual pavement maintenance coming up here in just a minute. And yeah, we will be um. Uh, for any time we repave a roadway, uh, we're required to also make all adjacent. Crosswalks and ramps ADA compliant. So we, in most of those instances, we had ADA ramps constructed from many years ago. But the ones we're replacing are just not ADA compliant. So the, yeah, that's part of our ADA. Train, our, our ADA plan to uh, improve all of those non-compliant ramps and crosswalks.
That's great. There's a lot of people up there who use that area. So thanks, it's looking good.
Yeah, yeah. Harborview Stinson slowly making progress on the last few items. Um. The key to doing the last few items is uh. Uh, the grass creek at the parking lot in front of the uh, boatyard house. That's uh, moving forward. And then um. They're gonna do just some final touch up cleanup work and punch list items and then be out of there. Um, we anticipate we'll, we'll be done with the majority of the items and and have substantial completion. And then soon and then physical completion by uh, September.
Jeff, sorry to interrupt. Um, Laura was trying to get over for a while before and finally was able to come over. I think she may have had something to say about the unveiling. Of the Austin project.
Oh, great. Go for it, Laura.
Indeed, just a quick update that the date of August twenty-fourth that we submitted to tribal council um, a while back. Uh, took them a while to review it. They finally got back to us this week and said it's too close, which we agree. That is, we want at least two weeks of notice to go out to the public and to plan. Uh, we've submitted three alternate dates in September, two in the first week of September and one in that second week. Uh, and we will hear back from tribal council um. When we hear back. So we will hopefully have enough time to plan and get that up. Um, uh, that install went much faster than we thought it would. So. Just a huge congrats to Jeff's team for making that as seamless as possible. And we hope to have that, that celebration uh, happening soon.
Great, thank you, Laura. And thank you, yes, thank you, Jeff. Um, I was gonna give you kudos later, but I might as well give. They, we had lightning and everything going on down there and they had to stop everything and wait for the lightning to pass. And anyway, I, I'm just so proud of our team.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was great. Uh, and it was well documented. Um, uh. Let's see, the artist, his son was there, Gary and Williamson was there with his wife. And then um, Mark Anderson was there with his uh, video camera documenting it all. So.
Right, great.
I'm sure something will come out of that. Uh, okay, so uh, Rosedale Stinson, uh, Aaron is working to finalize the last few steps we need to take to get approval to install the streetlights. Those are here and they will be installed very soon. So that will close out a. Year plus two year project, actually. Uh, just finalize that little bit, so. Uh, annual pavement maintenance, as we were talking about earlier, that is proceeding. There are a lot of areas that are mostly complete. There's still striping that needs to be done. It's one of those things that I've probably talked about nauseam that we gotta wait at least twenty-one days before putting striping down on the fresh asphalt. So the striping doesn't, uh, asphalt doesn't bleed through the striping. Um, but some of those, that's pretty much it, what's left in most of those areas. But Point Fosic Olympic is the uh, that corridor all the way from Olympic all the way down through the intersection to uh. I think it's right there um. Near uh, Harbor Country Estates is all gonna be repaved. So, uh, and then forty-fifth alongside the library out on that dead end road to the west. So, uh, so lots of work to go on. There's gonna be night work coming up and Marcos and Laura are in communication about that. Um, and just a side note, it's not on this one, but uh, uh, Aaron and Laura are also in touch about uh, restriping. Annual restriping that we're doing with Pierce County. So uh, we're gonna be getting that done. Ten dates are August, starting August twenty-first. So I think it's twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third, something like that. Um, so uh, just be ready to see Pierce County trucks rolling through the city uh, and getting restriping done of our classified roadways. Okay, uh, mid-block RFB crosswalk system, some good news on that. The operations crew has been, has started out. At uh, Pacific Avenue. Uh, they are getting ready to install those ramps that are gonna be ADA compliant, thanks to Shelby and Stephanie for. Getting uh, a great design together for that. Um. Uh, we're trimming up trees wherever possible to, so we don't have to take down trees. But uh, those are all getting installed very soon and their goal is to have it installed, I think they said by. If not, let's see, did I hear school starts in this pencil school district, August thirty-first? That's all right?
Yes.
Yeah, so it'll probably be either August thirty-first or September first. It'll be right there at the start of school. Uh, other design that we're working on is Fiftieth Street over by Veterans Memorial Park. Uh, that one's next and will be uh, on the books for construction later this fall. Uh, I think I've said this before, but the crossing of Soundview, just adjacent to Hunt Street. Uh, we're holding off on that because we're looking at uh, next budget cycle, doing a water main project in Soundview. And we didn't want to put in a crosswalk and then. Rip it back up when we put a water main through there. So that's being held off for now. Uh, Burnham Drive Phase One A, that is uh, design is progressing slowly. We're gonna, we're waiting on uh, US Army Corps, National Marine Fisheries. And the state to approve all the mitigation. But uh, we are getting close to getting some final documents under review and then out to bed later this fall. Uh, Prentice Fenimore Halffoot Frontage Improvements, design is proceeding with this one. Uh, you probably saw my email request. If anybody has interest in walking the site, just uh, let me know. Got a bunch of dates and times out there. Uh, happy to walk those, that site and just show you what the impacts are going to be as we reach out to the residents also. Uh, Thirty-Eighth Avenue Phase Two, um, surveyors are trying to get out on site very soon. Uh, we're just waiting for some rights of entry. The surveyors, in order to do full design. Or exact, the engineers, in order to full design, need survey of the site beyond the right of way. And so over wherever we need survey information beyond the right of way, we're going to be requesting rights of entry to allow surveyors to temporarily walk on people's private property. To catch uh, survey information. But moving forward. Uh, Water Main Interstate with Kenwood, uh, Kenwood Boulevard. Uh, we had a good discussion with Washington Water the other day. We gave them. A few options to think about and then they're gonna come back to us and then we will proceed forward from there based on which option they would like to go with. Uh, involves is whether or not they're going to want to participate in the project or just let us build what we need and then have to pay for their own improvements later. And then Red Drive Fifty-Fifth Street Water Main, uh, that project is awarded. So uh, we're gonna get ready for a pre-construction meeting here soon and uh. Um, just uh, get ready for everybody to be involved and uh, get that project over and and out of the way. It's gonna be a fairly easy project, hopefully, knock on wood. Um, and uh. Contractors very well versed with these types of water main projects, so it should go quickly. I was hoping to have a picture of Ryan Street lift station. It is uh, almost uh. Done in terms of looking like it's done. There's gonna be startup procedures and a few other things going on. That's gonna involve operations and um. Uh, engineering here in the next few weeks. So that actually takes a long time. We have to keep, that we have to put the new lift station online to keep the old lift station. Ready to go. And so in case there's an emergency, and then we can um. Be ready to go and and dismantle the old one. And that's gonna be the last few parts of this. Uh, says construction's gonna be over by the thirty-first. It's my understanding, it's actually now gonna drag into September, but we've gotta get a date from the contractor. Uh, let's see, twelve Wood, twelve Wood Hill is moving along well. They are uh, keeping up on their work. And uh, really um, George and and Chuck are moving it forward, resolving issues. And making it look easy. Uh, Murphy's Lane Marina Navigation Channel, uh, the permit's been submitted. We're just waiting to hear from uh, Army Corps if they have questions. Or if for approval. And wastewater treatment plant digester upgrades, uh, slowly moving forward. It's been kind of a hiccup on that, uh, with all of the staffing changes. We're down currently three staff members at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, of course, Daryl left, uh, and then we had another employee resign. And then um, we have one employee who just uh, was it yesterday or the day before, just had his, you know, his wife just had their first child. So he's now at home with new baby. So uh, down three. So down three people there, that makes it kinda tough. But priorities. And then Stinson Avenue Slip Linings and it also includes the Stormwater Slip Line at Mountain View Place in Bernhardson, all one project. We, this one, we've kind of let slip, sorry for the pun, but it's kind of something that is a good to do, but it's not critical yet. So we have we're gonna talk about this project internally with engineering next week or the week after to see if we can even get it in, make it for this year. We have tentatively scheduled or a budgeted money for this project to be completed next budget cycle. Don Creek Daylighting, actually, I am gonna be following up the consultant. They're making some progress. They've done, completed their topographic survey. And they're doing some modeling and talking to agencies. And then we're going to be having hopefully in September, some public processes to move forward with options. And then utility rate study, good reminder for me at least to reach out to Ashley Emery. He's been patiently waiting for me to get back to him. I just haven't had the chance to spend a couple hours going through all of this data and responding back to him. So I think that's the end of, oh, well, that, that's the end of our list. The public outreach matrix, a lot of what I summarized here in our, in our discussion right now. So that's a quick overview.
Thank you so much, Jeff. I'm sorry I interrupted you. I had a quick question, clarification question on the Pacific Crosswalk. Did you see that that work was gonna be done on August thirty first or, or September first?
Yes, we, the, the operations crew is very aware of the school starting and I, I know that they're more aware of it than me. But they're trying to get it done by August thirty first. Meaning it installed is one thing, but having it wired together and approved, we've, we've gotta get L and I permits for all of this. So it's having it all fully installed and accepted is I don't know if they're gonna be able to get it by August thirty first. Now, will the crosswalk be there? Yes.
The road won't be closed on the first day of school with a bunch of trucks and asphalt happening, cuz that's my only concern. There are so many little walkers that come from that neighborhood and that's the only road they use to get to the school. So that's why I was just trying to make sure there wouldn't be like a road closure on the first day of school.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I will reiterate that concern to Brandon and his crew, but I'm almost certain that he's aware of it. We've been talking about this, but
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you. I just wanna make sure I had under, understood that and we could notify neighbors if there was gonna be any closures right there so they could find an alternate walking route that day. Okay, thank you so much, Jeff. Appreciate that.
So moving on to our fourth item of business, this is also a report from our Public Works Director, Jeff Lang Hillman. This is our water system risk and resiliency assessment update.
And I didn't prepare anything ahead of time. I just wanted to give you a verbal update. We've talked about the critical nature of this type of information. So I'm just here to just give you a verbal update so you can be aware of where we are. City staff and the consultant have been working together pretty diligently, a lot of time together. Since the contract was approved with Corolla Engineers in May to provide Environmental Protection Agency with their two requested very specific documents for emergency planning for our water system. Those documents are a risk and resiliency assessment. That was due by August ninth. We passed that. We were able to submit that actually on August eighth. Thank you, Jeff Olson, for doing that. And then next up is completing the emergency response plan, which is based on the risk and resiliency assessment that's been completed. That emergency response plan is due in November and we're on track to meet that. So we're on track for everything. But in order to get there, we, we've had two very long workshops with city staff and with Corolla. They are looking to get a lot of input from us so that they can put information into their spreadsheet and database. So they can assess values and risk. They also came out on site and looked at all of our water facilities and spent an entire day with Jeff Olson, looking at all the facilities and looking for areas, places where we are, would, might be vulnerable. But I just wanted to provide you today with quick feedback of the risk and resiliency assessment. The overall takeaway from that document is that we are generally in good shape and have relatively low risk to our water system. The reasons why we have low risk. We can fairly easily operate our entire water system manually, not fully manually, but pretty much we can operate it manually. We are small enough, many, many water departments are larger than us, are fully automated. And it's quite a challenge to operate those facilities. Some of them have some massive water treatment plants and those are almost entirely impossible to operate manually. But we don't have large treatment plants because though generally the groundwater that we drink comes out of the water pretty darn clean. There's a little bit of iron and manganese. It's not, it's called a secondary contaminant. We don't need to treat for it. We do just out of preference, not out of any requirement. So, so that's, that's a big key is that if something goes wrong, we can just get, if we have enough people, we can just operate the water system manually. We also have fairly low natural hazard risks. And I'm just gonna share my screen to make sure I have the right slide up. Need to show everybody everything, but here is, here's what they looked at when they looked at natural hazards, earthquake floods, tornadoes, hurricanes and all the rest of them. When you look at that list, they're really, out of all of that, Gig Harbor is mostly subject and the top four are the key risks, the highest risk. The key one that we have is earthquake. And so when you look at all those natural hazards, that's the, our only risk. And so there are places that have three, four, five, six of these risks. And that's, that's a challenge to operate a water system. And then you, you have, it's hard to be resilient when you have that many natural risks to try and overcome. So we're just fortunate just because of the place we live. And we are not a prominent water supplier. So one of the risks we look at is, is threats by somebody who wants to harm our water system. And we're not a big water system that could take out millions of people. So generally that risk is low. We're not a big target for, for threats such as that terrorism. And then the water, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Henderson.
Oh, thanks, Jeff. I just had a question. On the level of risk and everything, I, I see drought is down there a ways. It's not a short term risk, but did they look at any long term risk for extended drought with climate change and our groundwater supplies dropping?
They did. They recognize that we have, one of the benefits we have is that we pull water from different levels of aquifers. And so that's where, when you put all of, some of the equations, I mean, they use massive Excel spreadsheets with all sorts of crazy equations I wouldn't even wanna get into. But they, the, the, the overall risk of, of losing all of our water system is, is fairly low. At, at, at least in the near future, because we're only looking, I think they were looking twenty years out or something. So, yeah, fairly low. And then the last, I know, reason why we're fairly low risk is our SCADA system, our SCADA system, supervisory, supervisory control and data acquisition. It's the computer that runs our entire water system. It's on its own independent network. It isn't part of the city's network. And so if the city's network is ever compromised, I mean, that's what people will likely go to if they wanna compromise a network here at the city. That's our SCADA systems on its own. And that makes it even stronger because it is completely independent. All right. So next steps, oh, Chief Bucy.
Is our SCADA system still dependent on our city radio frequency or is that migrated to cellular?
It has almost entirely migrated to cellular or copper wire. I don't know if any, I'd have to check with Jeff to see if any of it's on our radio frequency. I don't think it is.
Okay, thank you.
Next steps are to complete the emergency response plan. And like I said, that's due this November. We've got some more workshops coming up with Corolla Engineers to complete that. I think we're definitely gonna be on track to submit that in time to meet the EPA deadline. So that's my report. Happy to answer any questions, ma'am. Councilor Woo.
Yeah, yes. When we have that emergency response plan, will you be presenting that to the council?
I will probably give an overview similar to this. There's a lot of classified information in there that we, we don't even keep on our servers. And only a few people are supposed to have access to. And that's actually one of the assessments we, we found is that we need to even limit that more than what we do today. So I'll leave that up to City Administrator Knutson and the mayor and the city attorney about how much information they wanna provide. But a quick overview like this, happy to do that for sure.
That'd be great. And I'd like to have a little bit more information about the earthquake situation cuz that seems to be our number one issue. So maybe at that time we could get into the earthquake and what would happen.
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much, Jeff. Really appreciate your update and thank you for being here this afternoon. I hope you have a great rest of your evening. If you need to log off, we'll, we'll see you later. I'm moving right along to our fifth and final item is our Fourth of July event discussion. And this report comes from our Tourism and Communications Director, Laura Pettit.
Well, I realize this is an explosive topic, but thank you all for gathering, discussing this.
Knew there was one coming.
I thought I'd start that on that note. Yes, so as, as we know, there's been some interest in looking toward a event that takes the place of, of any kind of fireworks display within the city limits. Some of the considerations that we've, we've taken into are, are looking at the pricing for a drone show. We have looked at the options for also putting together an event that has no fireworks or show component. And so we kind of put together the the pricing and the difficulties that we found in each, the pros and the cons. One of the, the big detractors that we've heard from years past is that our downtown businesses didn't want anything that impacted traffic or shut streets because they do have a good amount of summer business. We have heard that there may be some support from those businesses and the Downtown Waterfront Association, they're interested in seeing what the impact might be. But however, that's not necessarily a time when business is needed. To put the amount of work that it would take into that one day and that compression, it would, it would really require a very, very high rate of return to see to see a benefit for, for businesses and shutting the street and putting together an entire, you know, day of festivities. One of the concerns we did have with, with any kind of, and I know fireworks specifically have been out ruled out for the fallout zones and the safety considerations that that may, may hold. The pricing within a drain drone show is is quite high. I've, I've sourced some coverage of past years and other towns that have done it. To make a show of any impact, it usually would start around two hundred to three hundred drones. And we'd be looking at a start price of around ninety to a hundred thousand dollars for that. That's a pretty big investment for a one day event. Especially if it's a time where we don't necessarily need that impact from tourism. Where that might be a better expense that, that would be applied, would be something that would, would work in our shoulder season or even our holiday season, when we do have that need to drive traffic into businesses and drive interest in visiting Gig Harbor. It's not a hard sell, as all of you know, to tell somebody to visit Gig Harbor in about, in July. So it, those are, those are some of the considerations there. The considerations with staff time and and potentially a third party vendor that would be engaged to put that forward. Also great, we could do that. It doesn't necessarily solve the problem of staff overtime that would be applied through the GHPD and our Public Works Departments. There would need to be a large amount of cleanup. There would be a large amount of setup. And there would need to be safety and security and road closures, even if we did swap services or engage services from elsewhere, we'd still probably be looking at a staff cost. So those are items to consider. Nothing is impossible. But, but those are some of the detractors there. Open to hearing thoughts as well. Shall we open it up for comment or discussion?
Prior to turning over to council, thank you for, for that overview, council. We did send Chief Bucy and Paul Rice, who's the Building and National Fire Marshal, put together the requested memo regarding the fireworks fallout zone. Her request from council and I wanted to make sure that you all received that and that it was attached for your, in the packet. And so as Laura mentioned, as the council has banned fireworks, individual fireworks moving forward beginning next year, there was some interest on council for a Fourth of July event of some kind. And so what we wanted several councilmembers wanted to put that on here to see if there was interest from other councilmembers to determine if we there was interest in having a city event or a city sponsored event, whether it was fireworks or not. And so that's really why we wanted to bring this with the information from Laura and from Chief Bucy and Paul Rice for your attention. Just to receive direction from council as to is this something that you are interested in that we should work toward for the twenty twenty three, or twenty twenty four year? And if so, what would that be with this information provided? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you. It was an excellent report on the fireworks as well. And it's, it's clear that traditional fireworks are out. I had some comments. So Laura, when you guys were looking at the staff time and costs and everything else, were you were you kinda costing out a full day closure of the area? So I'm thinking fireworks display and to, you know, alleviate some impacts to the city businesses. If we had a, a partial day closure or more of an evening closure, when a lot of the businesses are closed anyway, things close early in Gig Harbor. Fireworks don't really go off until close to ten in July. And actually, it would seem to me that some restaurants would love a lot of foot traffic later in the evening. Cars driving up and down Harborview don't bring business to the folks. They just drive right on through. So was there any thought of having it a little bit more confined to an evening closure? Which would alleviate some issues with staff time, police time, closure of roads. And then still give some local businesses the opportunity to be open a little later that night to pick up some of the revenue from the, from people walking around cuz walking around people generally bring more money than somebody driving by. I, I, I think it's important that since the council has you know, voted to ban personal use of fireworks, that we attempt to replace it with something. I mean, I, I understand there's a cost associated with it. But if we look at, you know, some of the potential costs of fire breaking out because we didn't ban fireworks, you know, what we might be paying might pale in comparison to something worse. So it's just kinda bring that out there as, instead of a huge all day closure, which would take a lot of staff time, maybe something a little smaller and more focused.
I mean, I think we can, we can look at the Summer Sounds concert setup as a, as a, you know, example of what that would look like. We'd have people dropping off chairs all day. We'd have people, you know, walking in, probably settling in. If we were to do something, I think we'd want it to be nice, you know, we wouldn't wanna just, I mean, do a drone show and have that be all your folks, good night, thanks. You know, I think if it was going to be either if we wanted it to be something that impacted tourism and brought people from around the area, we'd have to look at doing something larger. If we had decided this is something we are only doing for community engagement and something for our citizens, then that, that's a different consideration in total. One thing I do wanna supplement on that cost is that it starts at ninety thousand and goes up to around two hundred and twenty five. Those things get really expensive really fast. The staff time is gonna be minimal as an expense as opposed to those drone show costs. So, you know, if you did something that had no fireworks component and you did it in the evening, you know, and you did a band and vendors and things like that, it also gets a little bit hard to find vendors because it's a holiday. So those are just some of the considerations. Again, nothing's impossible. But the, the staff time, I don't think is the largest expense that we, we'd look at. I think there are probably some hurdles that we'd have to come and decide what we want that event to look like and what we I think there are probably some hurdles that we'd have to come and decide what we want that event to look like and what we want it to be, what we want it to accomplish. But again, not impossible, just, just up for consideration.
And, and again, Laura, just to add on what you said to Congress member Henderson's point, it would be important for us to know if there's support from council. For an event and then what type of event, because I know the chief, we've talked about. Police services for, for an event over Fourth of July and what that would be, and especially if it's a, a water event and getting potential. Can't think of the word now, but boats come in and see things that are on fire. Patrol boats, fireboats, et cetera, into those types of things. You know, those, that's pretty difficult to bring in as well, but gee, feel free to jump in as a question tool and thank you.
Well, and there, there is a thought too of, that I had heard from a couple council members about maybe having like a July third. Event where it's, it's a day that's close to the Fourth of July, but not on the Fourth of July. So I don't know if that is something that anyone would be interested in either. It might be easier on staff to not work on a holiday and. Easier also for getting vendors and, and things. So anyway, just, just throwing that out there because I had heard that from a couple people. Council member Barbara.
Yeah, I know that, um, a lot of you know that I started the Anchorage July Fourth Celebration in two thousand and two. And it's interesting to listen to Laura because when we started it, what we heard was no one wants to do it. No one's in town. No one wants to pay for it. Why are you doing this? And then the corporate sponsors started coming in. And then the culture groups started coming in and then we had the request to help the homeless and then it. Our event grew into. Okay, I'll pat myself on the back. I can still reach it. It's a giant community tradition. Twenty thousand people showed up the first year. They showed up for a pancake breakfast that started off the day. That was donated by Tote Ocean Trailer, Councilmember Storset. And also and put on by the Salvation Army. We made pancakes. It was four dollars for anybody who wanted them. A homeless person could come up and get a free breakfast. All of the money was donated to those in need in the community. We raised fourteen thousand dollars the first year for homeless programs. Then we had a parade that was a combination of an old veterans parade and also. A need in our community to bring our different ethnic groups together and also youth groups. There's no marching brand band in, in Anchorage for obvious reasons because you don't march for nine months of the year. So one of the music teachers started a band. And we got national coverage for that band because so it's, you can see that it was this. Germ of an idea that really the community grabbed hold of. And that's what I really think could be fun to do here is a. Community event, maybe a couple of us have talked about when we were little. And kids dressed up and did a little parade, like a two block parade. Through town all dressed up in red, white and blue. I showed Brenda the other day my picture of me dressed up as Betsy Ross. I was embroidering the flag as I walked down the street and my brothers were firecrackers. Stuff like that I think would really help to grow a sense of community here. And then what we did in the afternoon was we had various games and. In our case, because we were trying to build bridges with the community, all the different ethnic groups. Had a one day permit to do food in kind of the gathering area. And there was music, there was a group that read the Declaration of Independence. I mean, it was. And I'm happy to provide information on what we did. But based on what we did for that, the total cost, including having somebody do all the coordination. I'm estimating is about seventy-five thousand dollars. I'm not saying that's necessarily what we want to do, but I think it would be a really cool thing to do here. And I think the community would support it. I've spoken briefly with Mary De Maris about it. And as Laura said, she does want to do a survey of the businesses. But she also is very interested in being at the table to help plan an event, which to me is a positive. So I guess my thought on the businesses is to do a quick survey that says, are you open? If you're open. Do you carefully close the road for two hours? We are, you know, see what that says. And also, if you're not planning on being, being open, but if we had a community event, would you be open? And that might get to the restaurants that might decide they want to stay open because we're having an event. The last point I want to make is if we want to do this, especially in twenty twenty-three. We should have started about a month ago and we have to start now to start planning it or we won't. Have a band, let alone four bands to play throughout the day kind of thing. So. I'm a little worried about the time constraints that we're under for twenty twenty-three. I think we could still, still do a little parade, but probably not a full day thing. So that's my, my history. And I just, I'm in favor of a community idea.
Thank you, Councilmember Barbara. Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yes, I, I hate to be the grouchy one, but I'm not in favor of doing anything. The public clearly spoke to us and said they didn't want fireworks. The outrageous cost of a drone show that, that wouldn't go on until ten o'clock is certainly not going to benefit any children. The downtown merchants have always had the option to stay late, open late during the summer and they choose not to. We just had a parade, community parade the month before, almost exactly a month before, the first week of June. To road, to close the road for, Chief Bucy can correct me, but I think to close the road for two hours. Takes about an hour and a half to set it up to close it. And then you close for two hours, takes about an hour and a half to unclose it. Not to mention all the staff time. I, I don't think staff should spend another minute looking at this thing. I think. If we did anything, let's, why don't we try and convince Penn March to put in or Penn Met? To put a show on at Zanwill Park for the community and get corporate sponsors, but. I, I just don't think that, that we need it. I don't think we need the tourism at that time of year beyond what it's already there. You can't get a spot at the community dock during that time. So I think it's a waste of time and money.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodenberg. Councilmember Lichten.
Yeah, I had gotten some feedback from Councilmember Denson. She sent me some stuff before she left. I know that Mary had talked about having a community event with parades, things like that, and she brings some experience with that. I agree with some of these comments in that. You know, I don't necessarily want to give staff all this work. I would love to see if we did something that it could be done with a consultant. Especially as short-staffed as everybody is and maybe there's a subcommittee. But I also think maybe we could look out of the box, you know, maybe partnering what Robin had brought up was like, do we have? A day carnival followed by some type of event at somewhere like Semmel Park and partner with Penn Met. Maybe not having it through downtown or maybe just doing a walk your dog, dress up the kids bike parade for thirty minutes. You know, down some of the city streets or something like that. Or another thing that Robin and I threw out was like a taste of Gig Harbor. Like a food truck festival, you know, allow the restaurants to feature some of their things and maybe it's downtown, maybe it's at Semmel, whatever. But do we look at other things to do? I do think that a Fourth of July event would be well attended. I think. I live near a lot of families and they're always asking what's going on on the fourth. And when they find out nothing's going on, they want to be a part of something. I think it's community building, whether it happens on the third or the fourth. I, you know, I, the, the drone show is awfully expensive. I would have a hard time with that. But some type of event, just to have a community where we can have consultants or other people. Run it without impact, you know, keeping in mind the impacts to the police and the staff who definitely want the day off. So. You know, is there a happy medium and could we get like a subcommittee or somebody to talk about it?
Thank you. Laura, you had your hand up for a bit.
Yes, and then I'm going to try to lower it. There we go. Just two things to consider as well. If we do choose to do something, I do think it's important. What Councilmember Lichten just mentioned, is it a community event or is it a tourism event? If it comes to tourism, and this is also part of our LTAC considerations, whenever we, we talk about an event or a festival. Is it a need period? Is it going to drive people in? Something like a food truck festival sounds amazing. A taste of Gig Harbor sounds incredible. It might be better suited to another time of the year. For specifically tourism, if we take a look at community engagement and, and focus on that, that kind of shifts what we're looking to do. The other thing that I would just caution on is once you set something in motion. In order to get a groundswell of support and people who are coming, it needs to be a year after year thing. So if you're committing to a drone show. You can't just do it once. You have to do it a few years in a row to really gain support and knowledge of this, this. Location is a great place to come for Fourth of July plans. And so when you look at that cost, again, it is monumental for one day, for one event. But when you look at it for the next five years, is that something you really want to put those assets toward? And is that going to be beneficial and show a return? And I think those are, those are just some of the other things to, to weigh. When you take a look at, at what you'd want to do. I think that's the community engagement part is very, very important. But that maybe shifts some of the discussion on, on what the end event looks like.
Thank you, Laura. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I was thinking that, excuse me, that this is for the people at Gig Harbor. This is not an intent to draw tourism in. It's been stated multiple times here. We don't have that issue, especially in July. This is for the people. This is an attempt to replace what some people may think was taken away from them. So. I'd like the focus to be on the community and not, this is a big tourism drop. Like everybody said, we have, we have plenty of folks coming into Gig Harbor tourism in July. So this is for the people.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Councilmember Look.
Yes, I, I agree. I think that this would be a community event, not a tourism thing. Couple of years ago, we used to have a military band that used to try to play always around the fourth. When we did summer sounds and I don't know if there's a military band that could be available. For an evening event or not, but this would be a, I, I am totally agree with that. This is a community event, not a tourism event.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yeah, just one more data point. The Fourth of July to me has always been about fireworks and there are going to be fireworks everywhere. Not necessarily in Gig Harbor, but that's what fireworks, that's what Fourth of July means to a lot of people. So they're going to be going to Tacoma, they're going to be going to the Purdy Spit, they're going to be going to Key Center. So we would have, we're going to have a, some small event for the community in town. And there's going to be a lot of competition for their time and effort. And I think they're going to go celebrate the Fourth of July as so many people think it should be celebrated and that's with fireworks. So I think the competition, Laura's point about the food truck or Taste of Gig Harbor. At sometime other than July, you know, in February or in March, I think that's a, a wonderful way to fill those. Non-tourist months up. So again, just a data point, the competition.
Thank you. Councilmember Lichten.
Yes, I just wanted to add, I was just, this just came to thought, if we ended up doing some event. Whether it be Fourth of July, whether it be in March, like Butley just said, or whatever is decided on. Maybe those groups that were fundraising for fireworks, maybe we could somehow reach out to them to see if there's fundraising opportunities. For them to park cars or, you know, do something or have, you know, collect donations at the food fest. Just so that we remember them and the hard work and the potential, you know, income that they lost. Might be nice to reach out.
Thank you. Any other questions or, or thoughts from council? And, and really Laura and, and Katrina, what direction specifically are we looking for from council today? On, you know, is this just kind of like a kickoff discussion? I mean, I know Mary's, to Mary's point. If we don't get started on something soon, and it is the will of the majority of council to do an event of some kind. Then, you know, we may miss out for the next, this next year if we don't, you know, get the ball in motion. So. What direction are you specifically needing from council?
I, I think, I think we're really looking for where the support is, on what kind of event council would be interested in, in getting information on. So. What I'm hearing throughout this conversation too, is that there may be interest in a community engagement focused event. It does not necessarily need to involve a street closure. It does not necessarily need to involve a firework or drone show. But something. I, I think perhaps a little direction on what council would like to see happen. Or the, the direction we can go in researching and supporting that movement to Councilmember Barbara's point on timeliness. Would be very, very appreciated on that, that clarity. Note just where we're going and, and what kind of event you have the interest in.
Councilmember Storset.
Yeah, Laura, I think you summarized that really well. I would encourage us to look at something probably on a smaller, you know, very kind of small scale. Not a huge budget type of a thing, something we can build off of, especially knowing our timeline. Let's, let's not overextend ourselves. We got to warm people. Up to the idea too, and knowing that people will go out maybe later today. So maybe this is something more geared towards. Early morning to, you know, lunch, something like that. But I don't see, I don't see it maybe at least in the first year. Since we're not doing a fireworks show or any type of a display like that, that it's, you know, it's. Something I think we could really promote and get people out there, but it's probably before they go to do other things. So it's my thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Storset. Katrina, did you have anything to add? In terms of guiding us in a direction here?
Well, I think that Laura and Seth just summed up, I saw enough, some nods, small scale. Early, early morning to lunchtime. Event, I just, I, I would like to say that for this year, without this event, we have Laura and Jenica. In the Tourism Communications Department fully allocated for projects currently. And so looking at this event, I, I want to just. Bring to mind the work plan of, of the staff and how many staff we have here that are budgeted for. And so realistically. I think it would be very realistic for twenty twenty-four out of, of an event. Noting that if we were going to do an event. You know, I, I have every confidence, Laura, that you and Jenica can pull off something, you know, from January until July. But I, I would want to be able to talk with Laura about the work plan and what may not get done in lieu of work on this particular item. I think I may recommend, I know having three council members is problematic, but. If we're going to have something downtown, I really would like to pull in the chamber, Miriam and. The Downtown Waterfront lights, Mary De Maris, to, so that we're taking into account. The business impacts from there and then maybe even see the community sentiment about. You know, the city's considering an event. What are your thoughts? You know, what would you like to attend? Just to, just to get some feedback to make sure that the staff time and funds that we're going to expend are something that citizens would like and also that would not. Be negatively impactful to the businesses and the business community downtown. So. I, I, I guess that's a long way of saying I would recommend potentially a subcommittee. If we can get two council members that could report back and then we could pull in Mary De Maris. And the chamber and look at some community, what the community would want. With a, an out. I would say twenty twenty-four. For, for a kickoff. I know that that may not please everyone on this call and I apologize, but I do know that Laura and Jenica have their, their. FTEs filled for the remainder of this year.
Unless there was a desire for a consultant, which maybe could take that on for twenty twenty-three. But it still requires staff time to communicate with consultant and have all the meetings with the consultant and all of that. So we'd have to talk about that too. Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yeah, I really did hate to be so negative, but now I have something positive. Listening to Councilmember Storset and Councilmember Lichen as well as Councilperson Barber. A little bit of all their ideas, I think that a daytime. Something like a pancake breakfast at a venue not downtown, because people are going to be downtown anyway. Uh, and maybe have, uh, inspirational politi- uh, not political, but patriotic speakers, maybe a, uh, armed services band, maybe something to do with the Fourth of July, held at a venue, uh, where there's parking and maybe twenty-six acres of grass, uh, just off of Burnham Avenue, uh, where you could park co- plenty of cars. Uh, something like that might be a thought to just start with baby steps. Uh, but, but you would still be recognizing the Fourth of July and, and what it stands for.
So if that is something that we want to try for twenty twenty-three, Laura, I'm gonna look at your eyes as I'm saying this, but if we were to come up and do pancake breakfast, you know, and a band, I think that's manageable to, to sponsor, to do for next year as a start. While the subcommittee is working on, you know, if there's a larger need, I really do love, um, not that this is my decision at all, but the kids and the dog parade, I've heard that from several people, especially even city staff that have dogs and want to show off their dogs. So, you know, we may be able to even get staff participating, you know, future years with something like that, but Laura, is pancake breakfast, you know, patriotic band, like doable for twenty twenty-three?
Patriotic pancakes are doable. Um, we could do, I mean, the other thing that strikes me is, is a possibility for a morning event is any kind of fun run or, um, you know, uh, something could, could go to a specific fundraiser. It could also be Uncle Sam themed. You should, you can show up in costume. Uh, it could be something out on the water. Maybe a tiny regatta. I have no idea. Um.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think that's a great idea, Laura. I think maybe we, you know, get together and meet. It seems to me that, uh, you know, Fourth of July, not that it's, again, it's about, uh, but the mayor and I just met with the PTSD Foundation and how they support our, um, our service members that have, uh, returned with, uh, PTSD and supporting them through. So maybe we consider a donation to, to that foundation, um, from Fourth of July Pancake Breakfast. Um, just a thought.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yeah, I, uh, gee, just like brainstorming here, uh, I think the dog parade is, is excellent idea and and I think, uh, you know, that on Harbor Hill Drive from the YMCA all the way down to Burnham, uh, there's sidewalks on both sides of the street. And as far as fundraisers for some of those, uh, charitable organizations or the bands or whatever that, that are not making money this year selling fireworks, maybe they could uh, get a particular dog sponsored. Maybe they could, uh, go and say, I'm gonna walk from uh, Sentinel to Burnham and back. Uh, can I get five dollars from you or, you know, and it would be some way for them maybe to, uh, earn some, some money as well. But that, it's a quiet street, you know, where the dogs could walk and.
I was just thinking how cool it's gonna be when our sports complex park is ready and we have our event lawn and this would be, that'd be a perfect place for this kind of event. And a great location for the parade. I agree, um, Councilmember Rodenberg, with Harbor Hill Drive as a, as a nice route for a, for a costume parade. I think that's a great idea. Councilmember Barber.
Just another option for a fundraiser. I like the, um, sponsored dog too. We had a, um, bike corral is easiest way to come up with it. And on Harbor Hill, if you did some sort of a bike event or something, you have a nonprofit at the, at the end where the pancake breakfast is and you can leave your bike in the corral for a dollar and you've got kids from Gig Harbor Soccer or whomever, you know, keeping track and keeping your bike safe while you go off to enjoy whatever else we might have there.
I like all these ideas. I think this, a community event is fantastic. Um, and Kelly, you have any thoughts? You wanna, you wanna weigh in at all on?
No, I, I, this all sounds very reasonable. I, I certainly think it would be easier on our end to staff a morning, uh, sort of a, an event than certainly an evening one. Uh, I'm wondering if, uh, Veterans Memorial Park might be of any of interest.
That's, yes, that's also a very great suggestion. There is parking, it's quieter street. That's a great idea as well.
I, I just had a little tiny, tiny niblet of an idea. Um, I talked to the, one of the organizers of the Gig Harbor Lighted Car Parade the other day. Um, what if it was a Fourth of July car decorated car parade? Uh, and there's a winner. You decorate with your family. You are, you know, limited by certain amounts of things you can do. There's a parade that goes through a cer- certain route. People can set up chairs and watch that and then go do their evening activities. Uh, that's another interesting way to just get people's creativity involved. Uh, get a foundation involved and we know people who know how to do it already, which is kind of nice.
Yeah, the city wouldn't even have to run that one. We could just kind of like the light parade, let them just go and set it up and have maybe, maybe that could be a, and a morning option that the cities, you know, kind of is running and then an afternoon, evening, something that an organi- and other organizations running. So, I like, I like that.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I apologize. So it sounds like we have conference to start small for twenty twenty-three with some of the ideas that council, um, and staff have discussed this year and then we can pull together a subcommittee to look at a potential larger event, uh, for twenty twenty-four.
I'm seeing lots of heads nodding, so I think that's good, good direction. Yeah.
Okay. And I know that Councilmember Wook and Barber were the two that brought this forward to us. So, I wanted to make sure that, as you wanted this to be on the agenda, did we we get what we needed to from, from your perspective? And if we had that subcommittee, would, would it be you two that would sit on that or are there other councilmembers that would, you would want to sit on that?
I'm happy to sit on it.
Okay. Great. Um, Josh.
I, I just recommended if we're going to have a staff committee that works on this, that we treat it like we did with the Climate Advisory Committee and have it be a staff focused committee so that staff can select the participants on it. Otherwise, we're creating an OBMA committee, which I don't think anyone wants to, to do at this point.
Thank you, Josh, for that reminder. Councilmember Wook, would you like to sit on the committee as well, the staff?
I was gonna open it up and, cause I thought I saw a lot of people interested in this and so if somebody else would like to sit on this, it's fine with me.
Okay.
If nobody else wants to sit on this, I'm happy to. I just thought, I, I heard a lot of good ideas from a lot of people, so that was just opening it up. That's all.
I would very much like to be actively involved in that.
All right.
I think we would hope that you would. So thank you for saying that.
Great. So we will put together that subcommittee with the folks that we talked about and also that are on this call. Thank you, Kelly, Laura, Councilmember Wook and Councilmember Barber. And then, so that will look for twenty twenty-four beyond and Laura and I will get together about the smaller start for twenty twenty-three.
Great. Councilmember Lichten.
Yes, I was just gonna say, um, Jenny, if you want, I can be a part of it. I was a part of one in Stilicum, which was kind of a small community event where we had the pets and the bikes. So I'd be happy. Unless you want to, I defer to you.
Thank you. I think that's a great idea for you to sit on that, Brenda.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, awesome. Well, this is exciting. It's, um, I think it's something that the community will, will embrace and I look forward to getting their, their feedback as well on what they would like to, um, to see happen on that day. So, if there is nothing else for the good of the order, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move, we adjourn.
Well, sack. Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening. It's a beautiful night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.